I mean, for Christmas, you know, when I thought that's the worst. I just bought some heater drawers.
I'm good.
Last year, I just got frostbite.
How you doing, Al?
They got things for my refrigerator.
Yes. Please have like a battery pack with these things. I've tried to check them out yet because I have a heater.
It's just hard for me if you just, the dogs poop. Pick us down. We need a lot of things. I'm staring at you so I do some pop cameras. But in real life, I don't think you don't want this.
We're more dog.
Thank you very much. A button to press and the battery has to be charged. It has 10 hours, but it's really good. Why is that so? So you've got to fully recharge it.
You're not out there returning.
Right. It's just you've got to let it run down, then it charges up faster. So it does take a while to recharge.
So they still be at the white.
So, yeah.
Well, that was silly, wasn't it?
So I would, I would. It's a little different. So you need to find.
And below each color.
It's like recharge your energy, too.
It's a savior for me to keep walking the dogs.
It just.
This is the one. I want to make sure.
That's what he usually likes to do. He's spacing.
I think it was like.
What are you doing?
This one.
That's not bad.
Bring my container back.
Yeah, just make it that 40.
My container back.
Unless somebody else pulled out.
So, uh. Two more. Yeah. It's.
After they lost. Well, in my time, I watched him play three Super Bowls. And after the third.
This should be originally.
I'd be, I would be ashamed.
And then.
Four days. I'm talking about four days.
Yeah. I'm going to bring up. I've already.
See. Well, we don't have people visit garden choppers. Um, it's, it's one of those things if they leave it, then of course, if they pick it up, the garden chopper has got to be left there. People know you can't do that. You know, and I don't know if they got a threat to not pick it up or what to do. I've got one like actually.
Cat's got it.
No, I knew you did. No, because I didn't see it until lately. And so I was like, well, I'm not surprised.
And your husband, who the hell is he taking home?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, we're uncalled in.
Number seven.
I believe that's the $1,200 change. Unforced.
It was, and I took the time to congratulate Sam.
Well, the Eagles help. When you fumble like four times, you're not going to win.
Hi.
Hey, my probes are on.
Oh, you can turn them off.
Okay, we have a presentation of some, what are we doing?
Okay, so to start.
The mayor and councilor shall not engage in discussion or debate on items raised by members of the public, and no action may be taken on items raised in public comments in order to comply with open meeting laws. With that, let's have public comment. The floor is yours.
Joe Carter, 610 Elmwood Drive. I just wanted to stop and say thank you to all the council members, the mayor, even though Mr. Greer isn't here today. But I specifically wanted to stop by. I know that Gabe, the end of the year, will be the end of your tenure here. I wanted you to know that the public appreciates what you do and have done for this community. A lot of good things have happened while you've been on the council, and I think you ought to hear that. And I don't think the rest of you guys hear enough of that as well across the board. And so I wanted to speak up to that in specific. I love that part of State Street's back open. That's kind of nice and looks very good, and excited to see some of that coming. And would just like to talk briefly as well about, I'm probably known more than anything or anyone as the proponent for growing to 50,000 people by the time 2030 rolls around. And while some people have talked about that and say it's just not possible, we can't do that, we wanted to set a target. Some of us that were looking at this, and if we're going to grow our businesses and really be able to do what we want to do and become a community that's more popular, and I think not so impoverished, we've got to grow. And that's my true belief, and we're trying to do that down at Marshawn Company on 8th Avenue. If you've been by on 8th and Main, you've probably noticed some of that and some of the things that we're trying to do. If we're going to bring people to this community, sure, I'd like to get roads better, but the other thing that I'd like to say, because a lot of people will say, well, you've got to be able to do the infrastructure. Nobody moves to this town because of how the roads look, because almost every community in the country's got the same problem we do. And so I hope that you guys continue your assault on making this a better community to live in with all the different things that we need to drive people to bring here. Because if I can't get people to want to move to Marshalltown, we can't continue to grow the business as we've been doing, and we need it in the worst way. I guarantee Emerson needs it the same way, Lennox does as well. And so if you're going to help us, you're going to continue to drive the things. Roads, sure, we got to get it. I hope the franchise fee goes through at some point or another. But if you'll keep doing the things you've been doing, I really appreciate it and want you to know that, and keep driving. Thanks.
Thank you, Joe.
Doris Kinnick, 2020 Catalina Place. I just want to say thank you to those who are putting the outdoor ice skating rink together. I am so excited about this. I came from Wisconsin. Ice skating was very big up there with hockey and everything else. So I'm very happy that this is a project that is, that will be going on at least for this year, and I want to thank everyone involved for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Doris. Are you going to be skating?
Um, maybe.
It'll be going on for the next three years. We've sponsored that with the Iowa Wild and a lot of great community help as well.
Hello, Jim Shaw, 522 North Second Street. A city ordinance 90.024 concerning dogs at large. It should be unlawful for an owner or keeper of any dog to permit such dog to run at large, whether the dog is licensed or unlicensed. Section D of that ordinance says a dog found at large shall be forfeited if and upon the owner or keeper being found guilty of a third or subsequent offense of this violation. This is where it gets personal. Week and a half ago, my fiance was walking her two Chihuahuas. Her dogs like to walk on Jerome Street. Kathy's a little apprehensive of this because there's a pit bull on the street, but she has a little bit of confidence because she's had three instances of this where she called the cops. That means that this dog should not be there. As she approached the house, imagine her shock, it was outside with the owner and no leash. It started heading towards her, causing her extreme panic. She's already had one dog killed by a pit bull, and when she tried to intervene when it came back after her other dog, she got bitten and had to go through the rabies protocol, $5,000 at her own expense. Now a fourth event with a dog that wasn't supposed to be here. The system failed her. What now? Should she pick her dogs up and back away, risking a fall? Should she turn back the way she came and risk an attack from the back? All while, the pit bull owner was telling her repeatedly, keep walking, he won't hurt you, he won't hurt you. She expected him to come leash the pit bull, but that did not happen. We have ordinances for this. She tried to pick her dog up and turned back the other way. Then she called the police for the fourth time. I know the excuses. When and if the police arrived at the three previous times, the dog was on a leash or in the house, so they did nothing. Police do not have to witness a crime before they issue a citation. Not in domestic assault cases, not assaults of any kind. Police issues of all kinds on tickets or issue tickets on all kinds of citizens' complaints they don't necessarily witness. Their job is to enforce the ordinance. The owner should have at least been issued a ticket and be warned what would happen if there was a second or subsequent violations. Why does he have more rights than she did? Maybe what you're asking right now is why didn't she walk down a different direction? That's the wrong question. The right question, why was this dog still a threat? Dogs do not run this town. Kathy and any citizen should be able to walk on any street without being afraid. The next time this happens, Kathy's going to call me. I live three, four blocks away, and we'll both walk past a pit bull, and if the pit bull comes out to attack or comes too close to us, it's going to be a very bad day for a pit bull. Changing topics, at a previous council meeting, I did not get a chance to address the statement about 40 dog bites in a 10-month period of time is acceptable. That's almost once a week. One bite a year is not acceptable. And very recently, we had another bite incident involving two individuals October 13th. Several officials have told me that Marshalltown does not have a dog problem. Forty bites in 11 months? Guess what? We have a dog problem. If it's acceptable to you and you're proud of it, then let's put it on our billboards. Chamber needs to redo it. Welcome to Marshalltown. We only have 40-plus dog bites in a year. Yeah, I know it's sarcasm, but it will make you think. Thank you.
Anyone else? Not seeing anyone. Let's move on to mayor, council, and administrator comments. Pretty quiet up here. Joe, do you have anything? No? Okay. Moving on, we'll go to the HUD Lead Base Paint Hazard Reduction and Healthy Homes Program Grant Award Presentation.
Jackie Pippin, Housing and Community Development Grant Manager. For the past 20 years, council has supported the efforts of lead hazard remediation in our community. I started out working with Michelle as a community partner, doing education and outreach on that very first grant 20 years ago. These are extremely competitive grants, competing with large cities and for a community our size. To tonight be accepting our seventh grant is really nothing short of amazing. We have completed 781 units in those 20 years, with an additional hundred slated for this grant cycle. As a nurse, to know how this reduces the devastating effects of childhood lead poisoning makes me so happy. It's all about the children. This could not have happened without HUD support, without your support as council, nor would this have happened without the incredible grant writing of Michelle Spahnheimer, who literally wrote this grant on her vacation as a parting gift to our community. At this time, I would like to introduce Julie Sleeper, who's the Senior Management Analyst from HUD to present the check, and Tyler Silverthorne from Impact 7G, who will be our environmental and inspection team.
Thank you, Jackie, for inviting me to tonight's city council meeting. Our previous field office director, Steve Eggleston, has been here before to award funds for your outstanding work in the lead hazard reduction. 64% of our homes in Iowa were built prior to 1979, with the median age of these homes in the 51- to 60-year range, increasing the likelihood of lead base paint in those communities. And the city of Marshalltown has been very active in your efforts to reduce the amount of lead in your community and the effects of lead poisoning in your children. I'd like to congratulate the city of Marshalltown for your accomplishments and for the past 20 years in working with our programs. And it is with a great honor that I present the city of Marshalltown this check in the amount of $5,026,330 for lead hazard reduction and healthy home supplemental funding.
As most people know, the city of Marshalltown has an abundant amount of older housing in town, and we can definitely use these funds in keeping kids safe. Thank you. We are going to recognize the following individuals for years of service milestones in 2023. For five years of service, we have Beverly Warden in the Investment Committee, and I
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Let me fix this. It's hard to be vertically challenged. Okay. Yes, I'm here on behalf of the Library Board of Trustees. We are actually honoring two trustees tonight. Tanya Gaffney has been five years. She is the current board president. Tanya does an exemplary job of running the board. Sometimes we ask her to use her teacher voice. She's also a full-time teacher, educator, community volunteer in other ways, a busy mom. So we are very pleased that Tanya is setting an example for what our community does and how they step up and volunteer and do great work. And just to remind you that the Library Board is a governing board, so unlike everybody else, I don't report directly to the mayor or to you guys, but I report to the governing board. So I want to thank Tanya for all her service.
Tanya and I matched today.
And then, celebrating 25 years of library service, and she's so youthful.
I saw her when I was six.
Maureen Lyon has given, I would probably say hundreds, if not a few thousand, hours to the Marshalltown Public Library. Maureen was past president and also during the whole building process. Maureen was one of the, she's the last member of the existing current board that went through the whole process. So she's been with us through the good times, the tough times, and I know with people like Maureen and Tanya, we will get through the challenging times that we're facing now. But I depend on her history and her great enthusiasm. Maureen is always upbeat. She is always positive. She is a real great, again, a community member who has stepped up, and not just here. I know she's served on the Y and other boards, and again, an example of, you know, the community of volunteerism and collaboration in our community. And I'm very thankful that she is on my board and that I call her my friend. So. Thank you. It's been an honor. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Hubbard, you have someone for Park and Rec?
You mean the photographer and stuff? You surprised that it's you?
We're giving everybody one tonight.
Steve Torjahan has been in our Park and Recreation Board for the last five years, and I started here almost five years ago. It'll be five years in February, which doesn't seem possible. But so Steve was on the board, and one of my first tasks was to try and raise $1.35 million for the Coliseum, and I thought that was insurmountable. And we figured, tried to figure out who could be on our committee to help us raise that money. And Steve and Vic Helberg stepped up to the plate to help us do that, and within a year we raised $1.35 million. He's helped out with, we had the concert, Jason Brown concert, he helped out with that. Anything we've kind of needed some help with, Steve's been a part of. Also, right now, he's working on some display cases to go in the Veterans Gallery over at the Coliseum to display all the different memorabilia that the county has for each of the different branches. So Steve is insurmountable help to everything at the Coliseum, and I appreciate all his support for us.
And I know he'll want to talk.
I told Gary I wasn't going to say anything.
Jeff said you're going to talk.
I appreciate this. Many years I worked or played City League softball, City League basketball. I think I had 35 years of basketball and 40-some years of City League softball. So I appreciate the Park and Rec Commission, and I try to get payback a little bit for what they have done for me over the years. My legs and my back is probably the lesser part of this, but over all those years of athletics. But I appreciate this very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. I do need to mention Paul Peglow has served the Civil Service Commission for over 10 years. This is his 10-year anniversary for that. We'd like to thank Paul for that. Moving on to the consent agenda, I've been asked to pull items 6, 9, and 10 from the consent agenda. We will deal with those afterwards. So do I hear a motion to approve the?
Move to approve, Your Honor.
Second? I have a motion and a second. Questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Kel?
Yes.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Approve the minutes for the November 27, 2023 meeting in the bill listed amount of Approve liquor license renewals for Eastside Liquor and Grocery at 1116 East Nevada Street, Plaza Desol Mexican Restaurant at 903 West Lincoln Way, BPOE Lodge #312 at 101 West Trish Street, Tannen at 125 East Main Street with outdoor service, Hampton Inn and Suites Marshalltown at 20 Iowa Avenue East. Approve the July 2023 financial statements. Approve the August 2023 financial statements. Resolution 2023-247, approving agreement with Impact 7G relating to the inspection-related services associated with the HUD Lead Base Paint Hazard Reduction Program. Resolution 2023-249, approving contract change order number seven for the South 7th Avenue Extension Project ECO 22001, an increase of $1,233.85. Resolution 2023-250, approving engineer statement of substantial completion for Edgewood Street Extension Project Number STR 19003. And Resolution 2023-253, approving the Marshalltown Municipal Airport Five-Year Capital Improvement Program.
Thank you. Let's move back to item number six.
Resolution 2023-248, of support and financial commitment for the Main Street Program in Marshalltown, Iowa.
Move to approve, Your Honor.
I have a motion?
Second.
I have a second.
Your Honor, if I may?
Yes, you may.
In the contract, the MCBD and the city agree for demonstrated support, and it says a city official will be placed on their board, the governing board. And I don't know if I'm stepping on Mayor Greer's toes if he wanted to appoint somebody, but I would like to amend, make an amendment that before we approve this, I'd like to see the name of the person. I'd like to suggest that our newest council member, Greg Nichols, be on that board. And Greg knew I was going to do this, Your Honor, so, and he reluctantly agreed.
He still didn't give me a choice. Is that better? Must be getting a little chunky.
What you didn't hear, John, is Gary shut up is the part that you didn't hear.
Go ahead, Mark.
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. Also in the contract, it says that it would be acceptable if the chamber were actually the agency that was in charge of this, for this Main Street program. The caveat is it has to have a paid executive director, and I've been lobbying the council forever to merge Central Business District with the chamber because there's no reason to be funding both with taxpayer money. Thanks.
Do I have any other comments from the floor? Let's have a roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Okay, and now we move on to item number nine.
Resolution 2023-251, approving the STBG programming agreement for the Highland Acres Road Reconstruction Project with Region 6 Planning Commission.
Move to approve, Your Honor. On that, is there a second? Second. I have a motion and a second.
Your Honor, if I may?
Yes, you may.
The only reason I wanted to pull this is I want to nip something in the bud. As we start to repair the streets in town that have the poor, the pavement condition index, this is one of the poor ones, and I want everyone to understand and spread the word that we are not looking at starting with Highland Acres Road just because the city administrator bought a house and lives on that street. This process started in 2018 for this project. So please tell all your social media friends, everybody else, that as much as Mr. God would like a new street, this started before he bought that house. He had no knowledge that he was buying a house. But now that he knows his street's going to be tore up, he probably will sell his house. But no, I just wanted to say that, Your Honor, that...
Okay, so he's not only smart, he's clairvoyant.
Yeah.
Okay. Got it. Any other questions or comments on this?
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. This is a great opportunity to talk about the stuff to get stuffed on the consent agenda because this was actually discussed on the radio this morning when three council members talked. And the people want to know what's going on. Why do we keep stuffing this stuff in the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mark. Anyone else? Let's have a roll call.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
On to number 10.
Resolution 2023-252, approving Iowa's TAP programming agreement for the Iowa River's Edge Trail Bridges 2 through 5 with Region 6 Planning Commission.
Move to approve, Your Honor.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve.
Your Honor, if I may?
Yes, you may.
I just want to reiterate, if anyone from the public asks me to pull something from the consent agenda so they can discuss it, I will on the obligation. They will come up here and discuss it. So number 10 I pulled because a citizen asked that he would like to speak on it.
Okay, thank you.
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. So every year I come up here and I talk about TAP grants and how we can use TAP grants for sidewalks in relationship to safe paths to schools. We've talked about our ordinance and about how we have sidewalks that are broken. I don't know why trails are taking priority over this sidewalk issue. Only 4% of the people use trails, according to national statistics, and over 30% of the people use sidewalks.
Mark, can I interrupt you for a second?
Yep.
This item is simply to approve an agreement?
Yeah.
Between the two?
Yep.
That is the only thing we're deciding now. We're not talking about sidewalks.
And the other problem is...
If you could focus just a little bit.
They're not following their 28E agreement. They're supposed to be following open meetings laws, and they're not disclosing their board of members, their board of directors, and they're not disclosing their minutes of their meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments? Oh, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Joe Carter, 610 Elmwood Drive. I'm so tired of hearing about trails. I appreciate what you guys are trying to do, what the Trails Group does, and trying to drive some of these things. We're spending a lot of money trying to do these, getting a lot of outside grants. I hope that Iowa River Edge and everything else that we're doing, but I appreciate the agreement. I think we're just a little bit off base in some other comments, so thanks.
Thank you. Let's have a roll call.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Okay, moving on.
We have a report, the Impact Quarterly Update Report.
We should be on the resolution approving Marshalltown Municipal Airport Five-Year. Oh, okay. Okay. We're on, okay. Now we're up to Impact Quarterly Update Report.
Good evening, everybody. David Hicks, Director of YSS of Marshall County. Impact has been going very well, and the numbers certainly substantiate that. Through November, January through November, we've responded to 351 calls for service with 783 contacts. In addition to that, we've responded to 463 follow-ups with 856 contacts, with frequent users of those follow-ups being about 42%. So those are the people who are usually higher need than others. Comparing that to statistics from last year, all of 22, we responded to 262 total calls. So so far through November, we are 33% ahead of where we were all last year. And with the follow-ups in 2022, we made 361 follow-ups, and with our 463 through November, there's a 28% increase over all of last year. So the numbers are greater. We're seeing higher need. The challenges that we're seeing are certainly shelter for the homeless. We do have a grant where we've began to shelter some domestic violence victims. We've got some partner agencies in town, but we realize that we need to act a little bit quicker than some of the partner agencies when we're responding to domestic violence victims when there's a homeless need. I think Susie is here. Susie's our impact advocate over there. We've had great success in many respects. Susie's worked tirelessly with a couple families, especially a couple victims of domestic violence, where she's put them in a hotel through our grant money, like I said, and they have moved on to their apartment and have used some HUD dollars for that as well. So we may be the first contact. We get them stabilized, but then we move them on down through the system to make sure they are stabilized and self-sufficient. Our greatest need right now is finding a partner for Susie. We are currently looking for an impact advocate to work with the Marshawn Police Department. Has to be right person, right seat, as our impact advocates dealing with the homeless, the mentally ill, domestic violence situations that we discussed, juvenile issues, family conflicts, suicidal ideation, a lot of things going on in this community. And looking at our statistics, again, of those calls we responded to, 25% are homeless, 25% are related to mental illness, 16% juvenile-related. You know, that's, those three right there, it's over 66% of total calls. Add in domestic violence and other community concerns, our impact advocates are busy. So we'll continue to advertise to find that right person for the right seat. Really excited for our progress. And as we're kind of wrapping up, what is this year, number three? Kind of hard to believe we just had this approved. Kind of hard to believe we just had this approved. Three years ago, we've hit the ground running. Received a lot of statewide acclaim for this and some nationwide contacts as well. So always appreciated the council's support, community support as well. IMPACT is here to stay, or at least until 2026, when the funding runs out. But Chief Tupper and I are going to work like the dickens to make sure this continues because this partnership is powerful, certainly meeting the needs of our community, and the numbers certainly substantiate that. Any questions?
Your Honor, if I may?
Yes, you may.
Dave, in the past, you've shared a lot of the successes and everything. And I've asked you this before, and again, I'd like you to reiterate this. Every year, the numbers keep going up. Do you think it's just because the word is out there that what you guys are doing and the officers are now understanding better? Or are we having a bigger issue out there that we need to do something to help?
I think the needs have always been out there. We've just been more adept working with the police department in reaching those needs. Our high-quality staff really are able to work with these people, and the case management, the follow-up piece has really been critical. So I think that's where we're seeing our numbers. You know, the follow-up numbers, you know, 463 follow-ups through November with 856 contacts, that's just a lot of people. But it takes that case management piece of walking with them through several steps to make sure their, their conflict at least is either resolved or we're working with another human service partner to make sure that that warm handoff continues to give them success. But the needs have always been there. We're just addressing them. We're just kind of ripping the Band-Aid off, saying, here's the wound, let's treat it.
Thanks, Dave. Thanks, Your Honor.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to resolutions.
Resolution 2023-254, approving the Bolton and Mink Professional Service Agreement, Amendment Number One, for design and construction for the Lynn Creek Water Plaza in the amount of $226,400.
Move to approve, Your Honor.
For approval?
Second.
Motion and a second. Have any discussion? Yeah.
Jeff Hubbard, Park and Rec Director. As you guys know, back in August, we, well, before that, we interviewed a couple firms to come up with a, to choose which one was going to design the water plaza. Bolton Mink was chosen in August. They hit the ground running for that project, interviewed a lot of people in the community, went to the Harvest Market, got three different concepts that they designed, came, came back to the steering committee, which whittled it down to the one that we presented to you guys, I think, in spring. So this is just kind of to take that to a step further. Wanted to throw out, in the, in the memo, it talks about each of the costs of each of the four, so we also got a Destination Iowa grant for these, this project, plus three other ones. The Martha Luntai Playhouse, the trailhead and the bridge. So in your memo, it breaks down the cost, how much of the grant funds are going towards each project, what money we've secured through GO bonds and some fundraising. We do know there'll be some additional fundraising for this. We're working on getting a committee together to bridge that gap, to reach the water plaza But yeah, so now, now we're to the timeframe where we need to get the construction documents out to bid, hopefully in 2024, so we can have her built by 2025 to meet the Destination Iowa grant funding source. Also, in my memo, I just, I did some research the last month, reached out to the public, Department of Public Health, as well as some other people who have water plazas, splashpads in the state of Iowa, and kind of got some estimated cost for operating, because I know some people have some questions. And I think we're in the $20,000 to $40,000 range for operating expenses annually, since we are using recirculating water. A lot of people that just pass through water are spending more money because they're wasting 3 million gallons a year. We're probably going to use in the, in the tune of $150,000 or $150,000 gallons a year because we're going to keep on recycling it and recirculating it. I also did reach out to John Kelly with the Department of Public Health, and he said that we wouldn't necessarily need a shower if we installed a UV system under, into our circulating area, which could maybe cut significantly the cost of the bathhouse down to just a toilet sink, toilet urinal sink, and not have to have the shower house facility. So we still got to work through all that with the concept and design. But this contract would be to make all that happen and get some better cost for us and move the project forward. So have any questions if anybody has?
The UV option, that's something new, isn't it?
And I think the state is leaning towards requiring that on a lot of projects. I think, I've heard in the next five years, that may be required for any pool project or whatever. So it is fairly new. I think a lot of water treatment plants and other people have been using it for maybe 10 years, but it is a newer system for, in, in the aquatics world.
Okay, but that does save us quite a bit of money.
I don't know what the cost of a system was, but I mean, if, if we don't have to build a $400,000 bathhouse and put in a $150,000 bathhouse with a $100,000 UV system, you know, it's going to save us some money.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any questions?
Your Honor, if I may? So where do we stand as far as, so we see the public dollars. Where do we see as far as private donations at this point in time? Has there been any progress? Where does that stand?
We have not done any private fundraising for that. We had kind of started back when Jessica was here, but it's kind of been on hold since then. That's kind of why we're now moving this project. But it's going to take Molten Mink six months to do the design and work, and maybe those, those costs will come down. And we've already started working on getting a fundraising committee to get together, probably the first of the year, January, to start kicking off that, applying for different grants like Prairie Meadows, Martha Luntai, Community Foundation. All those will be happening in 2024, so...
Anyone, anyone else have any questions for Jeff? Okay, anything from the public?
Lee Bott, our 401 Orchard Drive, the face for Splash for Life. The UV system is not new. It's something that Vortex had shared with us over the past 10 years. Jeff, you've done a great job. Mike, you've done a great job. The original 2017 cost estimate for a splash pad was $164,000 from Vortex U.S., which is an international company that that's all they do, are splash pads, water plazas and such. I won't get into all the detail. You guys know the detail. You've had me up here multiple times, I know that. But we did have a project that, when it was put on the CIP, projected costs were half a million dollars. It's now progressed to the over $2 million. When we subtract the Destination Iowa grant, the general obligation bond, and other funding, there's still a shortfall of 1.3 million. So the question I've got, one of them goes to Steve, started on, you going to help us raise money? Yeah, exactly.
Might be a good one.
Exactly. So I'm questioning, where does the additional funding come from? Fundraising, yes. We did a lot of little fundraising things. You know, the raise the money at DQ, raise the money at that kind of thing. You can't get $2 million doing that. We know that. We need some big hitters. So Joe Carter, you coming to the table?
Always do.
Thank you. Okay, so my question is, can we cut back on a few of the extras and basically build in stages with in-kind donations? Splash for Life had several people that were willing to step up to the plate for in-kind donations, which were put on hold until we were on the CIP and until we had the 501. I'd like to be able to go back to those folks and say, hey, can you help out? In the meantime, I do struggle. I struggle with understanding how this, the expenditures, when we do have an infrastructure that's crumbling, taxes are high, poverty levels. David talked to us about the, the needs for the, the people in town. I'd like you to keep in mind what 10-year-old Nellie shared with us. Maybe you remember that little girl that came out in February and couldn't barely reach? And I think, John, you helped her with the mic, because she was just this little tiny thing. I didn't know she was going to present, but on February 23rd, 2023, her comment to quote, "People just want a normal splash pad. City shouldn't pay for something they can't afford." This little girl, who I really truly do not know, she's wise beyond her years. She is our next generation. Do we want to leave them with a legacy of debt? Let's make this a community build. Let's work together to raise the funds so we don't have to go back to the public for another go-bond. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. John Hall with the Marshalltown Area Chamber of Commerce. Appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you all tonight. Jeff mentioned the committee that was meeting together to put together a fundraising committee, and I think at the present time, I am kind of spearheading that fundraising effort as it relates to the private fundraising, though I am soliciting additional names. Steve, your name keeps coming up, so we'll talk after. But no, I do appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you all tonight. And a couple of the points that, that Lee brought up, I think were, were very valid and, and worth addressing. You know, the, the CIP programming of half a million dollars from the city is exactly what we're here tonight, kind of replicate or continuing, and asking for you guys to continue marching down that path. The Destination Iowa funds that we were awarded clearly shows that the state believes in these four projects coming together to create a really impactful series of items throughout the Lynn Creek District that really speaks highly of what creative placemaking is and can be and, and is what the state actively sees as the future as it relates to workforce recruitment, which you heard Joe Carter mention earlier as, as an extremely important thing. So, so we're asking for you all to continue advancing this. The, the city commitment of half a million dollars into this project is going to leverage a project far beyond that half a million dollars, utilizing some state funds. And we intend to kick off pretty aggressively with solicitation of, of private funds to close this gap. In addition to the fundraising gap for the, the capital projects, we are looking to set up a fund within the, the city Parks and Rec budget to help for continuation of some of the elements within the water plaza specifically, to ensure that not only, you know, the city, if the city can figure out the operating budget component of it, we intend to try and put some additional dollars behind kind of that long-term capital maintenance side of things for, for the project. In addition, you know, I know one of the big items is, is the Parks and Rec and the maintaining of, of the property. Certainly, this water plaza project calls for a great deal of outdoor landscaping and the like, and the, the chamber team is willing to commit to a period of five years of, of helping in both the spring and fall, organizing the volunteer days to come down and help city Parks and Rec staff do some of the maintenance on this. We firmly believe in this project. We're excited to help carry it across the line. And 2025 is going to be a very, very busy building year, as we need to get all these projects done and completed by the end of 2025, or we lose all the Destination Iowa funds. So if we, if we don't get there, that, that would be very, very bad. So we intend to get there and intend to get this across the line. So thank you all.
Thank you, John. Anyone else?
Good evening. Amber Danielson, Executive Director of the Arts and Culture Alliance. I just wanted to follow up some comments. Mike, I can't even see you. Comments from John, and again, some of the things that we've already heard over the months of talking about this project. But I think a good reminder that the Destination Iowa funds that were administrative by the Iowa Economic Development Authority was created to support projects that bolster quality of life in Iowa's communities and attract visitors and new residents to the state, specifically the creative placemaking category, of which we were successful in the funding for, is about creating attractive and memorable places for people to live and work by developing transformational projects that leverage local community assets to improve the experience for visitors and residents. I had the opportunity a few weeks ago to go to a statewide celebration where I got to hear Debbie Durham, the Economic Development Authority Director, talk about specifically the water plaza project, of which she is making the poster project across the state for creative placemaking. And I quote, "Often, I get the opportunity to visit Iowa communities and see transformational projects and success stories up close. There are so many amazing stories to tell, including Marshalltown, where New Water Plaza will celebrate the arts and the city's growing cultural diversity. These kinds of projects help raise the profile of our state and draw visitors with memories to make and dollars to spend," end quote. Specifically, I wanted to touch on the water plaza, because if you participated in any of the community engagement or attended the open house, you saw and heard excitement from many citizens in all ages in the community about this project. The creative placemaking guided by extensive community engagement led to an impactful design that is inclusive and reflective of the diverse backgrounds and experiences of Marshalltown. What started as an interactive water feature quickly evolved into a unique experience and a gathering space with significant meaning and authentic reflection of our community. This effort ties directly to the Arts and Culture Master Plan, and the Alliance is eager to kick off the next steps of these projects in partnership with the city, Chamber, and many others. Thank you.
Thank you, Amber. Just a quick follow-up. As everyone here, some don't know how many years people have been working towards something like this. And now that we have something like this, let's get it together and let's really make this thing zing. I have no doubt in my mind that this city can do and get that thing finished when we need to get it finished, and it's going to be amazing.
Doris Kinnick, 2020 Catalina Place. I do remember 2012 is when four children died. They drowned in the, in the river because there was no other place to go. And I really hope that this water plaza will indeed feature their names, or at least part of their legacy, because that's the reason why we started this in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you, Doris. Seeing no other comments left? Let's have a roll call.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Wadihoff?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Hoop?
No.
Okay. Moving on to ordinances.
Ordinance 15079 to amend Chapter 50 Garbage and Refuse by appealing Sections 50.001 through 50.099 and adopting new code, new code sections that amend the regulations for receptacle specifications, location of receptacles, and enforcement of regulations, second reading.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Move to approve, Your Honor.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Anything from the councilors?
Your Honor, if I may?
Yes, you may.
I was asked by one of the haulers to try and get some clarification on a couple paragraphs.
Okay.
And so there's a list of just three items, if I may, go through. Um, in 50.006, location of the receptacle, in item C, it says it shall be unlawful for any person, firm, or corporation, goes on to collect or take into possession any garbage as defined in this chapter, not placed in accordance with this chapter. So what that's saying is, again, if we're going to have ordinances that we can enforce and are going to enforce, basically what that's saying is anything that's in a bag next to their garbage can, not only is a possible fine for the homeowner, but a fine for the hauler if he picks it up. So one of the haulers was asking me, that's the first one. How do we go about a little clarification on that? Are you wanting me to make amendments that clarify that?
My own opinion is to leave it in, and I think it's incumbent upon the garbage haulers to let their people know that, hey, you can't be putting, everything has to be in the receptacle. Okay? You can get in trouble, I can get in trouble. If you've got too much stuff, then I can come back and get it up by your house. But the last thing that we want, I know Mark showed me a picture before the meeting, got the can right there, and there are two garbage bags right beside it. And that's the kind of thing that we don't want. So my own, my preference is to leave it in.
I would just note, personally, my hauler does require my recycling to be bagged, so that is left outside of the receptacle. So that may be some of the cases with these.
Heather?
Counselor Thompson, during our last meeting that we had with the garbage haulers, I know yourself and two other council members were present. We had this discussion at length within the haulers, and I think the haulers were in favor with leaving this language in, was my understanding. They also do not want, on a regular basis, the residents in Marshalltown to have garbage bags outside of the receptacle. They do understand there are instances, possibly after a birthday party, Christmas, those kind of things. kind of things, when there is extra material that does not fit in a toter. The haulers that we spoke to requested that the residents call them ahead and let them know that they have extra. They are all charged for having extra. We also have language in this ordinance that allows for a one-time pickup, which gives them 12 hours to set it aside. I think it would be a fair representation if the resident had an extra bag, and they let their hauler know that they have an extra bag, they've got that 12 hours to have it out there.
And Your Honor, this hauler in particular, and the other haulers in that meeting, they said they're going to pick it up, okay? They're going to pick up everything. They're not going to leave anything that their customer puts out. So just saying, we've got an issue here that's contradictory. So if we leave it, we leave it. I'll move on to the next one.
Go ahead.
Okay. 50.026, frequency of collection. Collections of garbage or refuse shall be made on average of one time per week. That was specifically brought up in that meeting. There are, there is a hauler that has people, elderly or single people, they pick them up every other week. So that's in contradiction, too. I don't know how you want to address that. Is that another one we're going to leave?
Doesn't the word "on average" address that, Gary? I assume that not all of their people that they are collecting refuse from are every other week. I'd assume that's probably in the minority, and therefore, your average is probably still closer to the one week.
So you're looking at an average of all their customers, not an average of each particular customer?
That's, I guess, the way I interpret it. I mean, that's, I assume they're not doing that as general practice across their business.
And I'm fine with that. I just want to make sure, moving forward, when we set up this new fine structure and get away from the nuisance and go to fines, I want to make sure we're all on the same page.
Councilor Isom is correct. Previously, before, the language was changed from "on average." It was a minimum of once per week. The language was changed to "on average" to accommodate the one hauler that does offer a less frequent pickup for those low users.
I'm okay with that, okay?
Okay.
Then the last one is 50.027, paragraph B. All persons licensed under the terms of this chapter shall use Packer-type trucks. We have a hauler that, there's two ways we can approach this. We can either grandfather him in, because he uses two pickups, for some of the pickups. He suggested that, we just change this, that their primary truck is a Packer truck. And so if any new haulers come onboard, they at least have to invest in a, okay? So again, this is, I don't know how you want to approach this, but this is one where we, last, earlier last year, we specifically made this so a new hauler couldn't come onboard that did not have a compactor truck. And now we're going to change this and tell an existing hauler that he's not going to use his two pickups. So this one of the three needs a little more clarification.
And I believe we did talk about the hauler that would come in on special occasions every once in a while, or someone that they missed, and they would, instead of bringing the whole truck, just bring a pickup. And that was okay.
And that's another, there was another thing in here that we talked about, you know, they couldn't, they had to use a compactor truck for their regular, you know, pickups. So basically, there's a loophole in here that if I start a garbage service and have a pickup, and if I just tell you, I'll get you every week, but I don't tell you what day, I think that's, I think, but again, there's, the real issue is, we have a hauler that has two trucks. He admitted to me, he does use them on a regular route, so I don't know how you want to address this. And Heather, refresh my memory, was that, did we clear that up in that meeting? I mean, Jeff and Barry were there, too, so.
I believe during the last garbage hauler discussion, there was some discussion on the other side of the table from where I was, particular to this item, so I don't know all the details. I think you may have more information than what I do in this case. I do know that the intent of that meeting was that their standard, normal, scheduled routes, week to week, are only allowed to use a Packer-type truck. There were several of them that admitted to having another type of vehicle, especially as it came to providing pickup for large items that weren't normally scheduled if an individual is missed. And then also recyclables are the three items that I recall being discussed.
So Your Honor, I'm okay with letting this slide if we're telling this hauler that, you know, if the trucks are not being used in a regular route, I mean, I'm okay with that.
Well, and also, this is the second reading, so if you want to do some more digging into it.
I just, again, you know, just, there's some nervousness out there a little bit, and we've got one more reading, so, thank you, Your Honor. Thanks, Heather.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, Your Honor?
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate, I said this at the first reading, too, but nobody's garbage service is changing. With the reading of this ordinance, nothing changes. We're pretty much codifying that there can be curbside pickup. There will be future ordinances changing, that we will have set days for every street. The city is working on that with the haulers. We will establish a set pickup day, so the curbside garbage will only be there once per week. If the cans are left the next day or any other day, you will be fined. In the background, we're also working on our ordinance enforcement mechanisms to give ourselves a little more teeth, if you will, to enforce these ordinances. So there are more changes coming.
Thank you, Jeff. Good comments. Okay, anyone from the floor? Yes.
Just to tag on to what Jeff said, nothing's changing. Make it real clear to people, every hauler will still offer pickup at the house, okay? They don't have to have the service where they take their toter down to the curb. So they're, they will have that, so people need to understand that, just what Jeff said, nothing's changing for them if they don't want it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, correct? Let's have a roll call.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Cal?
Yes.
Wadihoff?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to discussion items. Downtown parking and lot leases. Heather?
Good evening. Heather Thomas, Public Works again. I'm going to go ahead and open a map so that everybody can see the parking lots that we're discussing. So the intent of this discussion is really focused on downtown parking lots. We also do have a little bit of language in there about the 13th Street District parking lot. But in front of you is a map, and all of the cyan-colored boxes are existing city-owned parking lots. Back in discussions had in September, it really stemmed from, we had interest in a business renting or leasing parking stalls in a downtown lot. During that discussion, it kind of spiraled into, we have a larger issue than just leasing stalls, and that we really need to look at our ordinance first before we move into discussions regarding the leasing of an individual stall. There seemed to be consensus in the discussion amongst city staff, some with council, and some of the public, that our current ordinance, sorry, I think I broke the mic.
Okay.
Our current ordinance prohibits a vehicle from being parked in the parking lot for more than 12 hours at a given time. So I think consensus was that we change our current ordinance from a 12-hour limit to a 72-hour limit. And I think that adjusts some of the concerns if somebody, you know, went out of town for an evening or a weekend, and some of those items from a downtown living perspective. We also talked a little bit about the ordinance that we currently have that prohibits overnight parking in our parking lots. All of our parking lots currently prohibit overnight parking between the hours of 2:30 in the morning to 5:30 in the morning. I believe our consensus and what we're proposing here tonight is that we change that, and we only have that prohibition on four lots. On the map in front of you, the lots that we're talking about prohibiting overnight parking would be the Library, the Coliseum, the City Hall and Carnegie Lot, which is over here, we call that Parking Lot T, and the Farmer's Market, which is designated up there as Parking Lot Z. So we're recommending that those four lots be the ones that we don't allow overnight parking in, and the other is all opened up to overnight parking. One of the reasons that in the past we've had that restriction from overnight parking between 2:30 and 5:30 is to provide for a time that parking lot maintenance happens. So we're talking about sweeping, pavement markings, filling potholes, those kind of things. We also had an ordinance, and we have an ordinance, that has certain restrictions during snow-removal operations, and that's a larger timeframe from 2:00 AM to 7:00 AM. Right now, we have some of that set up, where half of a lot is prohibited Monday, Wednesday, Friday. The other half is Tuesday, Thursday. We have some lots that are Monday, Wednesday, Friday, no parking. And so it's probably a little complicated, and especially got a little bit more complicated after the tornado when some of those signage that designated the restrictions disappeared. Because we knew we had more downtown housing coming onboard, those signs have not been replaced, and there has been limited enforcement on our current parking regulations. In discussing how we accommodate both parking lot maintenance and then also snow removal, we've discussed utilizing our current snow emergency alert notification system as a system that can be more inclusive and not only includes snow removal, but also maintenance activities. We'd be able to communicate with downtown landlords and tenants of the importance to sign up for these new splashes, so that when we do put a parking restriction out there, they're aware of it. And then we talked about sistering parking lots. So on the map in front of you, you'll see the lots grouped into two different categories. Our thought would be that one night, we would allow parking in, in, let's say, Group 1 lots, and then the following night would be Group 2 lots. This would allow our staff to go in and perform that maintenance activity and still have a parking lot within a block of their normal lot to park in. So that is our proposal that's out there, and with that, I'll go ahead and open it up for questions.
Anyone have anything?
Your Honor?
Yes.
So what's the percentage of leased lots versus just open lots? Because we've leased some, but it's not very many, right?
Our recommendation is to discontinue all existing leases. We currently only have one city lot that we have a hard lease in place right now. I use the word "hard," although it's maybe a little loose. It's a lease that we've basically had on auto renewal. On your map in front of you, that would be Parking Lot Y. We previously had half of it leased to one business, and that business has indicated the intent to discontinue and has discontinued that lease for us this year, and the other half is currently being leased by an adjacent building.
Any other questions for Heather?
I just wanted to comment that I think this is a positive change. It's about time we allow some overnight parking in our city lots.
Thank you. What do you need from us?
If there's no further discussion, I would go ahead and plan to bring an ordinance, a first reading of an ordinance amendment to you for the changes we've discussed. The other item, I don't know if it's going to come up. We talked a little bit about leasing stalls. At the very end of my memo, I've kind of outlined our current thought for how we would approach if we do get a request to lease stalls. Essentially, it's going to utilize our existing city master fee schedule of $25 per month per stall and use that consistently across the board, which has not been done in the past. That would give the opportunity for the existing business that leases half of the stalls in Lot Y the opportunity to lease those again. Leasing them up would give them an opportunity to not necessarily follow the parking restrictions when those alerts go in, and we'd work one-on-one with those leased stalls. So if there's interest in leased stalls, we'd probably go ahead and plan to follow the outline that I've included in the memo, but at this time, we don't know that we have anybody officially still interested in leasing if this ordinance change goes into effect.
Does anyone, the audience have any questions or comments? Everyone okay with her bringing it back?
One question prior, but I don't have any problem with you bringing it back. What's the count on downtown parking in the first place, just so we know a balance of, so, for businesses versus residents? Because we want both to grow to downtown.
I don't have that number handy off me, but I can bring that back in the first reading of the ordinance on how many stalls are available in these lots.
Thank you. Everyone okay with her bringing this back? Thank you, Heather. Next is sale of city property.
Yes, in your packet, you have a memo. One of the, I don't want to say interesting or startling facts, I realize, when I got here, is we own a lot of lots. So we've been very aggressive in taking down some structures, and then we have those lots left over. So in the memo, I propose selling several residential lots. There's a couple of commercial and industrial, but fairly unique. Selling those by sealed bids. We listed two different rounds, six properties in one, and then five properties in the other. And if we happen to not get any interest in some of them on round one, we could put them back in there. The ones that are listed on round one, for the most part, we've had at least some interest from folks in these lots. Not so much in the round two, so we'll have to market those a little more, which is why we put those next. But in the first round, we would start issuing requests for sealed bids and start the marketing on that yet this week, having sealed bids in in early January to bring them to the first meeting, so you could set a hearing, and then hold that hearing on the second meeting in January. In a similar situation with round B, but that would start in January and end by the second meeting in February. I have list, also in here is our sale, proposal for sales, our policy for selling property, and the different ways we could do that. And then, besides the lots, again, I'm catching up on things. And back in February, you approved selling a building that's at 20 East Main via an RFP process. So not so much, how much can we get out of it, but also, what are we getting out of it monetarily, and both as far as future use, what's the building going to be used for? So I put in here a draft RFP that still needs a little bit of work, but this is basically the first draft, and to show you that if you're comfortable with this, we'll continue to move forward. But one of the things that's different than buildings than lots is that we probably need to put out an RFP, and I think we'll get some interest. Again, we've had several calls, but we'll probably be able to narrow it down to which ones are maybe worth moving on. And we were in the building today. There's going to have to be some due diligence period in there from, if we get some proposals that we'll probably bring to you and ask for permission to continue to work with these, and then bring some final proposals and plans later on. This has a date that we would have potentially in February. I think we'll extend that out a little more, probably make that a 60-day period. But just to let you know, when we come in, I don't think it'll be 60 days and done, but we want to do this right. We want to see retail increase downtown. One of the things we mentioned in that block is, there's a lot of things in that block, not necessarily retail options, so again, spreading that out will be good. But I think we'll see some interest in that as well, so that's the secondary thing to the sale of lots.
Okay. So what do you need from us tonight?
Just to let me know you like the list of the properties, the residential lots, and if you have anything to add about the RFP process, I'd take your comments on that. We'll prepare that as well.
Your Honor, if I may?
Yes, you may.
Joe, are the 12, or the 11 lots, is that everything we have?
That is not everything. That's everything that's vacant and hasn't been, I would say, reserved. We have several lots in a infill housing project, and we'll talk about that a little bit later on. It's probably not going to continue that way, but these are, I believe, we probably have a few that I'm just not aware of yet, but this is the bulk of the residential vacant lots we own.
And then on the RFP, my, I guess my concerns there are, I think we should bite the bullet and do the lead abatement and the asbestos abatement in 20 East Main. I think that's going to be cost prohibitive for anybody to buy that building and take it on. I know that boiler in the basement is wrapped in asbestos. And then the other thing is, part of this RFP, I think we've got to make arrangements with either Jim Bowman on the east side of the building and Matt Garber on the west side. They're the only ones that have to allow access into the upstairs. They're the only ones that have to allow access into the upstairs. There's no way to access the upstairs for people to even look at it before they put in a proposal.
Correct, yes.
So, I think there's some, going to be some handshaking going on there to be able to get into that upstairs. But I would like to know what other counselors think about us biting the bullet and doing the lead abatement and the asbestos abatement before somebody takes on that project.
I would fully agree with you, Gary. I think the more hurdles we can remove from an investor standpoint and new business owners or somebody else who wants to do that, I would agree with you, that would be something we should evaluate as something from a city perspective. I don't know what that looks like from dollars, which obviously is where the conversation will end up, but I think that's worth the effort.
I might address a couple of your questions, and maybe Heather, I think, had some numbers on maybe what that would cost. I remember that.
He's going to shake and no.
One of the reasons we didn't is, you have a lot of dollars tied up in this building already, so we were trying to make it, and when somebody's, you know, demoing out a building and getting it already, which is what's going to have to happen with this one, and to make it a blank slate, they'll be doing that kind of stuff anyway. The asbestos doesn't add much to it, but I think what we'll do is, let's get some estimates and bring that back to you before we do, but we'll bring back some cost estimates on that. And you are correct, that building is boarded up, except for you can climb a lot of stairs over in Matt Garber's building and enter in through an old, I want to say like a loading dock type of door. That's what we did today when we were up there. I'm meeting with Matt next week, and we're going to set up a, what does he need to know ahead of time? He's willing to work with us, but we'll make sure, much like you see sometimes, showings with 24-hour notice only, well, this will be probably very similar to that.
Well, I'd love to see those numbers, and then also, I appreciate the two neighbors willing to work with us there, so thank you.
Yes. I think we're working with two different issues here. The residential lots, everyone, go ahead and put that out for sealed bids, and then, when Joe gets back with the final draft, what you want to do with 20 West, or East Main, and then we could have the numbers then and everything, that we can make an informed decision on it.
Right.
Okay. What do we got left? Budget schedule. Everyone has been given a schedule of special meetings for budget items. Does anyone have any questions or comments about that? I take that.
I'll just bring a couple things up. We do propose starting this on January 15th with a special meeting. I call this the Budget Issues Meeting. I've been doing this ever since I started this profession, probably this is about my 15th budget year, of coming in and talking about some of the things you're going to see, maybe some words before you see the numbers, and getting some of your insights, because at that point in time, on the 15th, we're just starting to kind of pull things together, so having some input and influence in that will be helpful as we finalize those final numbers. And then you'll start to see those numbers. We'll bring some things, probably like the CIP thing, but not a whole lot of numbers on the 15th. You'll see those on the 22nd. And just one thing I want to point out, that's a very different change. Typically, we've had to have our budget done certification process by the end of March. A big change, when we talk about House File 718 this year, is that there's going to be a required hearing of every taxing levy that starts on March 20th. The county auditor in every county in the state has to send out a letter to every taxpayer in every entity, meaning the city, the county, the school districts, any taxing entities. We'll all get a letter at our house, and it will have each one of those levies on there, and a public hearing date. So, everyone's then required, after that notice, to have a public hearing date. They tell us to wait at least five days. Everybody's scared about something new, so they told us to wait until right around April 1st to schedule your hearings. So, that's one of the special meetings, would be to have that required hearing. It can't be on another meeting. It could be earlier, but then we start running into some time issues. So, if we, if that letter didn't get out, and we had a little more, needed a little more time, it's on our side. And then we would set the hearing on the 8th and have that on the 22nd. So, that's, that's taken the budget out a month longer, but that's part of those requirements.
Thank you. Questions or comments from anyone? Okay, we're going to take a five-minute recess, and then the city council will be going into, oh, go ahead.
Is this the last council meeting of the year, or is there another one?
No. I was just going to mention that our last meeting of the year will be Friday, the 22nd, at noon.
Noon?
Okay. That'll be the last one of the year, Friday, the 22nd, at noon at City Council Chambers. Thank you all for coming. They were, they were getting into it, you know?
Sorry about my comments, but I thought that was appropriate. I need to answer.
All right.
Steve, this is Heather. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Want to back off now? Leave them on.
Steve, this is Heather. Can you hear us?
Yeah, can you hear me? Yes, I can.